I'm going to call our meeting to order. This is our first official meeting of the new school year, or at least fiscal year, school year. So we have, this is going to be a work session, kind of a hybrid of a mini-retreat that we said we wanted to do. You have the agenda before you. The first thing we have on the agenda is our organizational meetings. I'm going to turn the gavel over to Dr. Boone and have her walk us through that process.
Good afternoon. Nominations are open for the office of board chair.
I would like to nominate Mr. Jordan for chairman.
Here nomination for Rodney Jordan for chair. Is there a second? Not required, but are there any seconds or are there any additional nominations? If not, without objections, then the nominations are now closed for the office of board chair. Since there's only one nominee, I call for a motion to suspend the rules and elect by acclamation. There a second?
I second.
Good, good.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, state no. The ayes have it and the motion is carried. I now call for a motion to elect by acclamation.
May have to open it for vice chair.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'll turn it over to the chairman.
Oh, do I do that?
Right.
Turn it over to the chairman. Have the script, please. All right, the floor is open for nominations for vice chair. Do we have a second?
I second.
Do we have any other nominations for vice chair? All right, hearing none, I will close the floor for nominations for vice chair. Since we only have one candidate for vice chair, I will receive a motion that we elect by acclamation.
A move that we elect by acclamation.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor of Dr. Gabriel being vice chair by acclamation, say aye.
Aye.
That'll be it. So, thank you, and we will move on with our agenda. Appreciate the board's action in that regard, and we will work together to, as a complete team, governance team, to continue to work in progress that we have before us. First thing we have on our agenda, at least the next thing we have, is dealing with our board governance. Want you to bear with me a little bit because we have some multiple documents here, but we put out some draft norms that we pulled together from Quinn. Also sent you all an additional items that we had pulled, that we had carried over. And really, I just want to share with you all, on Monday, I was actually up with VSBA participating in new board member training. And in addition to working with the VSBA leadership, our other partner was Dr. Jeffrey Smith from Hampton City Schools. And one of the things that he shared with new members orientation, he actually put together this little packet for them. And so I asked him if I could keep this, and they have 13, they call theirs agreements in general operating procedures, that he said that annually, he, as the superintendent along with the board, they kind of go through. And they pretty much align with ours, but as we go through this, might actually also do some sharing with some of the things that they have. But let's try to do it this way. If you pull up the document that says governance team model standards of practice.
Draft?
Yeah, it has a draft on it. So these are really kind of statements of values. You know, the norms, as we've talked about it with VSBA and as I was there with the training, really are the items that deal with, you know, what are our protocols? How do things get on the agenda? How does the board speak? What types of things that we do? So I at least want to make sure, since this is the way it's currently formatted, if you look at the document that I asked you to bring up, it just speaks to what our expectations are, kind of what our ethics are. So is there anything on there that anyone has any objection to? And let's just go through them. Place the interests of children above all others in the decisions that we make. Uphold applicable federal and state laws and regulations. Abide by the policies of the board and work with fellow governance team members to change those policies as needed to improve student learning. Maintain board focus on the achievement of all students regardless of race, class, ethnicity, or gender. Not use our positions for personal or partisan gain. Model continuous learning in our roles as members of the governance team. Maintain a strategic plan or some type of plan for the district that clearly defines success and accountability for the board, the staff, and our students. Focus on the policy work of the board. Base our decisions on available facts. Vote our convictions. Avoid bias. Uphold and support the decisions of the majority of the board once a decision is made. Work to build trust between amongst board members and the superintendent by treating everyone with dignity and respect. Maintain the confidentiality of privileged information. Recognize that authority rests only with the majority of the board and will make no independent commitments or take any dependent actions that may compromise the board as a whole. Refer constituent complaints and concerns to the appropriate person within the district chain of command. And respect the leadership roles of the board chair and superintendent. So while these are called our model standards of behavior for our discussion right now, can we just kind of treat this as ethics? Anyone have any objection or any questions or need any, want to discuss anything as long around those bullets we just discussed? If everybody's comfortable with that? Right, okay.
Need a motion to?
Well, right now, just kind of want to go through them, because I think ultimately what we will do is, let's kind of discuss these today. We'll have an opportunity to review them with our retreat, and then we will make sure that we get them all consolidated again.
Packaged.
In a package.
Right.
And then vote on them at a future meeting. Thanks.
We could technically even do that on August 2nd, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. Next document I would ask if you would pull up is the one that actually says norms and In the first part, this says norms, that kind of just speaks to many of the items we just went through. It addresses, the first bullet talks about making sure that we respect everybody's opinion. The second bullet, the chair will speak as the official voice of the board. We know that's really referring to, after we take a vote, you know, that the chairperson has a responsibility for representing the district or whoever the chair happens to designate in doing that. I'd like to know if we can pause on that one for a moment. One of the things that I hear frequently is, in terms of the board's communication with the public, the board's communication with city council, the board's communication with other stakeholders. One of the things that we talked about during the board, new board member orientation is, so we all recognize that the chair of the board has no more authority or power than any other board member. And that we act as the board as a whole, and each of us has a responsibility to communicate. And hopefully, we are communicating off of the same message with the same expectations. So I just wanted to pause because, you know, I often hear feedback that there may be some expectation that, you know, like the board chair has a sole responsibility for communicating with our legislators or communicating with the city council or communicating with stakeholders. We know that's not the case. We do, you know, take your legislative schools, all of us talk to various members of the community. But I just want us to pause and just talk about any confusion around that in terms of each of us having a responsibility to make sure that hopefully we are communicating good things about the division. And, but if questions come up, which we'll talk about later, how to handle it. But for now, is there any further discussion or confusion about our role as individual board members to communicate with the public and our stakeholders? And the role of the chair to communicate the official will of the boards? Any questions, concerns, any conversation anybody want to have about that? Reverend Haywood?
My understanding of it, as of all, of those two. But when, in our first years on the board, it was our understand, it was my understanding that the board chair spoke for the board to the council. And at that time, you were not board chair. And it was, it seemed to me that board members were discouraged from speaking to the council. I followed that policy. We've kind of evolved away from that, and I just wanted to know, what is the board consensus on that? What is, what is the healthy approach to communicating to the council?
Ms. Doyle?
So my sense is that any one of us can speak to any council member on any topic we choose. However, it's the chair's role to communicate to council a position of the board. So I wouldn't communicate a position of the board to another city council member and assume that's then the formal channel of communication. The formal channel is chairman to either mayor or chairman to council, however appropriate, whatever the need, whatever the topic may be. However, that doesn't preclude me, Yvonne, or Dr. Robinson, or anybody else, from calling up the phone to any council person and saying, you want to get together and chat. So that's how I've always interpreted it. And I believe that's, that's a healthy way to keep lines of communication open for education and understanding and learning on both sides.
Let me add to that, and I'm going to go to Dr. Robinson. So one of the things we, we agreed to as a board when we were doing the superintendent search, and we've talked about, is that Dr. Boone is the official face of the division and that she has the knowledge of what's going on day to day. And so I think as part of our communication, she's in communication with the city manager. Sometimes questions come across, and we know, as we'll talk about further, how we, you know, share things with the superintendent, because, you know, talking about policy and things at a governance level is one thing. You know, oftentimes, we get questions about day-to-day operations, and we know that we need to refer those day-to-day operations, questions, to the superintendent and her designate. So I just wanted to put that out there. So as we are talking about this, we're talking about the difference between the governing questions, the visioning questions, the strategic questions which fall at our level, also Dr. Boone, because she's part of the governance team. But in specific, when we get to the day-to-day operations, you know, we can't be out there trying to communicate to individual council members what's happening at individual schools because we are not in a position to communicate that. Dr. Robinson?
I would agree wholeheartedly with that. Dr. Boone is the face of the division, and she should be in direct contact with the city manager and the city officials. When it comes to board policy and the decisions that we make as a board, as a group, I think it's the chair's responsible, it's purview and responsibility to communicate that to the mayor and the city council as a whole. But again, I agree with Ms. Doyle, that it doesn't preclude us from having conversations with individual board members about our interpretations and our feelings. But again, we, following our board norms, we, when a decision is made, we back up what the board has decided. Ms. Basim?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think I follow with Reverend Haywood in terms of being a bit, you know, confused about what the process is, particularly, you know, the council's new, we have new members on there, and we have new members here, and so I think there's a new way of operating from what has been in the past, and then our roles as advocate and now board member, and seeing, you know, number one, Dr. Boone is the face of the division and having our governance leadership to really guide the conversation in terms of our position and making sure that we have a unified message that gets out to the community. But even in terms of advocacy, you know, like around the budget, you know, it is encouraged, I just want to be clear, encouraged that we each do take that opportunity to talk to our council members about what our needs are, correct? I'm just very fine that, that we have the same message. Because I have honestly been unsure of that, and I think we've had conversations about that before, but just so that our personal, what we personally think is needed versus what the board thinks is needed and making sure that we have a consistent message on that front.
Dr. Boone, anything you want to add into?
The only piece I want to chime in is the value I see to the relationship building between individual board members and council, and council and board members, and then the collective body is what allows us to begin to move some things forward. And so the times that individual board members will meet with council members, I think is part of that relationship building, just that we all, because I talk to board members, I talk to the city council members, I talk to the city manager. But it's also making sure, again, that it's the collective voice of where we are when it gets to those specific items beyond the relationship building. And in the end, what's the final message? Because, you know, Quinn and some others talk about the pitfalls or the dangers in terms of how we shared. And building relationships and building coalitions are two different things. I guess that's the simplest way to say it. And so that's the piece. And I think it's critically important that we're talking about these now, because as we know, in May of 18, and this time next year, we have a fully elected board. And to really have the clarity of those relationships is going to be important. You know, the greatest fear in a fully elected board that's aligned with a ward or a district system is that the myopic syndrome of, this is what I'm responsible for. So everything in this area is where I am. And I remember being at the Council of Great City Schools one year and listening to a board member from Dallas, and he talked about his schools and what he did at his schools and his district and everything else. And so I asked him, we were at dinner, I said, so what do you allow the superintendent or other board members to do? And so I think that's the importance and the value of us having these discussions now because as board members become a part of this group, it will be clearer as to the norms and the protocols, and I think it will help us go forward together and collectively.
Dr. Robinson?
To dovetail on what you're saying, Dr. Boone, I couldn't agree with you more. I see the role, after being in the role of the vice chair and trying to understand the role of the leadership of the board, is that it's a responsibility of the board leadership to develop that relationship with our stakeholders, to develop that collaborative effort to move the division forward and to articulate the will of the board, just as it's your responsibility, in my mind, to foster and develop that relationship with the city officials, the hired city officials from the manager to his direct reports, and then create that environment that we're working together instead of, seem to fight each other. And this has been an issue going all the way back to when I first started on the board. There's this big white line down City Hall Avenue, and we got to somehow pull it up and cross over it and work together.
To piggyback on what you're saying, Dr. Robinson, I think that white line exists in most communities, and the nature of the beast is the funding piece. And so it's not that you're drawing that white line or whatever else, but the nature of the conversations and the fact that the school board has the fiduciary and policy responsibilities for a school district, but how do you partner in that?
Absolutely.
That's the piece. But that line, I think, is in most communities.
And I could see how that would occur because of funding. And I think that's where it's imperative that we do what we can to foster that relationship because it's a matter of trust and confidence that's implied on both sides. And I can see how it can be easily eroded and how we have to be cognizant to try to overcome that to the best of our abilities because it's only going to hurt, in the long run, the students.
And so, so let me share a couple of things. So you know, this board and current council and previous councils talked about the desire to have more joint meetings. So this past year, a couple of things that we did, we established the, supposedly every other month, that the city manager, the mayor, the vice mayor, superintendent, board chair, and vice chair would meet. So that was a commitment that we made, that we would meet every other month. We also said we would try to do, have at least two joint meetings. So, you know, in those every other month meetings, it's an opportunity to talk about where we are with the budget, I mean, for the most part, not just the budget, but facilities and, you know, any other items that have come forward either from this body or maybe have come forward from council. And I think those are fine to the extent that we hold the meetings.
It's going to happen.
The other piece I think we have to be careful about, where I think there is a white line, is what's the school board's responsibility for governing the division? And as city council has a responsibility for governing the city, or governing city manager, however their process works. And I think where we have to get some clarity around, remember, we did the presentation about the role of the school board, and I think some received it and some did not. But you know, that came out of our effort to try to make sure that we could communicate to council and to the community at large, you know, what we expect and how we govern as a body. Even as I was with the VSBA on Monday, and every time I get a chance to do something like that, you know, I was saying to the new members, you know, we're all constantly learning. So the more you do it, the more you practice it, you know, sometimes you make mistakes and you have to come back and do correction. It matters. So when we have, whether it's members of the public, whether it's partners, city council members, state legislators, whoever it may be, then starting to want to get into managing the school division or getting into individual schools, you know, we're going to have to be able to, as a team, be able to communicate, you know, what falls in what lane and do it in a way that people can be respected, or it can be respected or people can be respectful about it. But sometimes that's tough, because as Dr. Boone said, and, you know, I was at city council last night, for example, and I think rightfully, councilors want to make sure that they are delivering constituent services for those that they represent particularly, as well as those that they, you know, represent the entire city. It's very different, for, at least I hope it stays very different for us, in that, you know, our constituent service is very different than the type of constituent service I think city council provides. And it's going to be incumbent upon us to be able to communicate that with the community because I think the community is used to the city council method, and I don't think that it's much harder to get that in, on the school system side. So that's why I kind of wanted us to pause there, because if there's anything that we need to do or discuss so that there's clarity around that, then, you know, that can be something we continue to work on.
I think as a general rule, we all know we have to further educate the community on the role of the board. I think that's an ongoing intentional effort we have to undertake because there's not always great clarity about that, because they do equate council equally in what board does at school board, and really, we do serve two different purposes and roles. So it's just really incumbent upon us to, wherever we have the opportunities, to share with folks what the role of the board is and what we do, and that it's not unique to Norfolk and that it's done in all other 132 divisions of the Commonwealth as well.
And across the country, at least the ones that are doing it well, yes.
Right, well, exactly.
Right.
So again, it's our responsibility to share with the community what we do, and I think conversations like this help, and I think us going to civic leagues help, going to picnics, talking to friends and neighbors, you know, always present opportunities for us to do that. So, and I think as a board, we're getting stronger at doing that, but it's an ongoing, forever process.
And maybe if we get another set of business cards, maybe that's something we can put on the card, you know, maybe like, you know, 10 things you didn't know, and kind of spell some of that out. Ms. Basim?
Well, I was just going to add, because, you know, you mentioned a couple of times about your own professional development, participating in new board members' professional development. And I think part of, you know, we're always, we're constantly learning, that piece, I think it's important for us. I mean, we've stated our commitment to our professional development, but I really think there's a lot of room to strengthen that commitment by participating in our local, our own personal, local, and, you know, any other professional development that we can undertake, not only for the content piece, but also in terms of our relationship building, which I think is important, because I think that's where we do get on to the same page. And then any relationship outside of us, I think, is also strengthened as a result of our, the relationships that we have with each other. So just wanted to tie that together.
Wagner?
I guess I'm just trying to see the line, does it mean that we don't listen to the constituents out there or?
Oh, no, that's our role. Yeah, we have to do that.
So we, and we listen, but we don't necessarily adhere to some of the things that they want or?
Give me an example of when you say.
I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, when you say adhere, I mean, so.
Maybe that's the wrong word.
So we are appointed and elected to provide governance for the division. We spend hours upon hours getting information, hearing from the superintendent, doing our own research, doing professional development. So to me, there's very few individuals who are not on this board who are going to have the benefit of all the information that we have and access the information that we have. So we're always going to get advice, like I said, I was at city council last night, sharing my opinion on things that they had on their agenda. I still would not have the vantage point of discussions they may have had with the city manager or with their legal counsel and other things. I'm simply looking at what's been presented, if they've had community conversations, what's available, and then I provide my opinion based upon that. Part of our job as representatives of the community is to share with the board and share with the superintendent what we hear. But we have the responsibility for acting upon the items that we place on the agenda, the policies that come forward, and the recommendations that the superintendent brings forward. It's hard sometimes because, as all of us know, you can go anywhere, grocery store, library, cleaners, wherever you go, somebody's going to give you some advice about something. I mean, you can't post on, you post on Facebook, which is something else up here, somebody's going to give you advice in their opinion. Ultimately, we have to make decisions based upon the data and information that we have, and part of that communication that we were talking about earlier is being able to explain to people, this is what we agreed to do, we acted upon this particular recommendation. We talked about earlier in terms of our strategic vision, where we're going, you know, we have to paint that picture of. You know, we have to paint that picture of where it is that we're trying to get to, where we are in that process. And sometimes people are going to like where you are, and sometimes people won't like where you are. But ultimately, if we're able through our communications, the superintendent's communications, the division's communications, we can show to the community clearly, you know, where we're progressing towards and what the outcomes and measures are that we're trying to achieve. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but if you want to ask it another way, or you can ask the experts when we get an opportunity to do so.
Dr. Gabriel?
There is a webinar that is going to be on August the 7th that I did share with the city council to see if they wanted to join in on it, and it's through the VSBA Communication, How to Foster a Positive Relationship Between the School Board and the Board of Supervisors. I'm going to try to do this one because I definitely see the benefit in that. And I think if they, some of them might be able to join in as well, it would probably be beneficial. And I definitely, to touch on one of the other points that you had just mentioned, Mr. Jordan, about our constituency base being different, as a school board member, our constituency base is very different from city council. We are responsible for the students, the teachers, the staff, and what community members who may elect us in feel might be something that is of importance might be completely different than what the item is that is necessary to advance student achievement. And the way that we find out about that information is through Dr. Boone and team in order to make those decisions. So I think that continuing to educate on that point is going to be very important, especially as we move on to the new members who are going to transition onto the board.
Just a couple of things, since we're talking about the communication and protocols. So the webinar information that you received, I think that was sent from VSBA to school board members. I know there's a fee associated with it, so a couple of things.
There is a fee.
So a couple of things, I think, one, making sure that you communicate with VSBA to ensure that they're comfortable with us sharing it outside of school board members.
Okay.
And then, and then you had mentioned that you had shared it with the council, but we didn't. I mean, that's the first time we're hearing about that. So, I mean, I think that's why we're having this discussion, so we can be clear on, you know, so is that Dr. Gabriel, individual school board member recommending that? Is that, could they perceive that as the school board telling the council, you all need to do something? So I think when we have these protocols, we need to be clear because very easily, they could receive that as the vice chair of the school board on behalf of the school division telling city council members, you ought to attend this.
Well, I think when I send it to them, it was, this might be a good opportunity if you want to do it FYI. But if you all feel that that's a core directive, then I can send it to you and Dr. Boone and VSBA and see if they like that. But there's obviously no ill intentions behind it.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that at all.
It's just, this is something that we have dealt with, as Dr. Robinson has said, for years. And if we can both come together through the VSBA and both, you know, learn from this to advance the cause, then I didn't see the harm in it, but I can certainly do what you suggested.
Well, I mentioned it because, like I said, since I was at the training, that they had, not only did they have new member orientation, but they had chair and vice chair training. And one of the components of the chair and vice chair training was about building relations with the local appropriating body. So I think when VSBA sends those communications out, they're really sending it out to the members of the School Board Association, just like somebody may send something to the Chiropractic Association. And we just have to be careful again that when we're communicating, how people, you know, perceive what's on the other end. Dr. Robinson?
You know, because that is a, this is an issue that's not just pervasive in Norfolk, but throughout the country, that might be a suggestion back to the VSBA to create a program that would be designed to be inclusive of school boards and appropriating bodies. I think that would be, that would behoove everyone involved if we could, again, foster lines of communication and collaboration and stop competing.
Indeed. So anything else on this one for now? Because we have some more to get through. Okay. So let's just keep going a little bit on this. We talked about communication, different roles. We want to talk about being aware of the different roles that we play as individuals. So matter of fact, we just kind of talked about it. Sometimes we are board members, at least the experts will tell you you're a school board member 24/7, whether you like it or not. But, you know, you can be a board member, you can be a citizen, you can be a parent, you're a part of other organizations. Anything anybody wants to discuss or have any questions about the different roles that we play? But the fact that, as I'm reminded all the time, and people can perceive whatever you do as being a school board member, like I say, even when I went to council last night, you know, I always worry if I advocate for anything, that'll be perceived as school board member and not individual. And normally, I'll try to say, I'm here as a private citizen, I'm not representing any other group. But I know Tanya, you and Noel currently have children in the division, and many of us have been on the school board with children in the division. Any stuff y'all run into where folks try to understand the difference between when you're a parent and when you're a school board member?
Yeah. And I've shared this with you all before. It is difficult to, it can be difficult to be a parent and a school board member because, you know, we're advocating for all children and including your own. And, you know, sometimes you do have to take a step back and think about how it does impact and positively impact in a lot of ways how you approach a concern, idea, whatever, you know, whatever it is related to your own child's education. But it also encourages you to encourage your children to advocate for themselves as well. You know, you don't like something, you, you know, teach them how to do it as well. But it can't, there are times, obviously, where you do have to step in as a parent. And, but I usually preempt and say, you know, this is, I'm coming to you as a parent and not, this is going, you know, between you and I, it's not going beyond that, you know. So I try to communicate that when I can.
I just can imagine it's difficult if you have an issue with your child and you have to go to the principal, how to put the principal at ease when you're discussing your child's issues. Because no matter what you say or do, you're still a school board member. So they're going to look at you that way. And if I may add, the worst time to be a school board member is 2:00 in the morning when you're staring at the ceiling. You can't go to sleep. That's the worst time. And can't, when I could, wish I could shut it off.
Right.
Yeah. You're right about that.
And that actual scenario, you know, came up in the training again this week. So it's a constant thing. And you and my children, you know, still in the school system, I probably spent less time in the school than I ever had, just out of concern of how it'd be perceived. I still went to parent-teacher conferences, but even then, you know, I would always reassure the teachers, like, hey, you don't have to worry about me. If there's some correction that needs to be done with my child, you do what you have to do. I'm not going to.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not going to get in the way of that.
Absolutely.
All right. So let's get down to the protocols pieces of it. So meeting agenda development, you all know we have agenda planning, you know, the chair and the vice chair attend. All times of 24 hours, seven days a week, school board members have the opportunity and right to share, recommend, request items to be placed on the agenda. And then we do the best that we can to try to prioritize that against what the superintendent has to deal with day to day. And part of the reason that we're doing these work sessions over the summer is to try to address many of the areas that we've collectively agreed to try to give more attention to this summer. But anyone have any concerns or any questions about the meeting agenda development process?
The only suggestion I would make is, and I was just looking at it now, is that there's the Rodney Jordan Agenda Development. If you could populate that on Board Docs so that we know what you're thinking about if the draft meetings are not out there. So I don't know what's going to technically happen in September at this point. I don't. But you probably have in mind, and we've probably all discussed, what we want to have happen. So I just think if that could be helpful to give us some line of sight of what's ahead.
Yeah, hopefully. I know, and Dr. Boone may want to chime in, you know, we had talked earlier, you know, we have the Board Docs Pro.
Right.
And so part of what I know that her lead staff are working on, Janelle, is fully taking advantage of the Board Docs Pro. So that area where I was putting there was my effort to try to kind of get ahead of it.
Okay.
Because, you know, members would ask what's on the horizon.
Right.
And so I was trying to have some type of running parking lot, so as you can see that, that hasn't been updated in large measure because they've been working on integrating the Board Docs Pro piece. And I think once that starts to occur, it'll be very helpful to us. Part of that is a little coogie workaround while we're in that transition.
When does Board Docs Pro go live?
We're using it.
It's just a matter of utilization.
Exactly.
There are a lot of capacity, a lot of capabilities within it. And so we've been talking about how do we utilize those to make this process much more efficient.
Okay. Great.
Attaining information about board meeting agendas prior to the meeting. We know right now for work sessions, or really for all meetings, our goal is to have things in place by Friday, close the business with our Wednesday meetings. We all know that if we don't know, let's just recite it, that with work sessions, we know it's always possible that we may get informations or items up to the work session. And sometimes, just for a variety of reasons, we may not, we may get things after that Friday. But the goal is to work towards having those items in place by Friday. So we have plenty of time to review it. Any questions, any changes? Dr. Boone, anything you would recommend we consider or reconsider with that?
No, I think it's appropriate, and my team and I continue to have the advanced conversation so that we can try to be ready. We include, the senior team executive group is part of the agenda planning. So then when we come back together, we're able to talk with other team members when the anticipated timelines and what we're seeking to provide to the board or what the board is interested in. So we will continue to work to improve our readiness for that Friday. As Mr. Jordan said, sometimes there are things that we do post later for a variety of reasons. And some of those are very sensitive information. I remember he used to talk about the walk up to the board meeting in terms of stories and certain things. But those are few and far between. But again, the idea is to post things as soon as possible.
And if I may add, that over the six years that I've been doing this, it has gotten a lot better. And the way we have the process set up, where at the work session, we work on the agenda item and then vote on it at the formal business meeting has helped out tremendously. Because in prior administrations, we had, it was a crossover. It was always seeming like you had, you were up against the wall trying to make a decision. Here, the decision-making process is a lot smoother. So I'm, it's a lot easier to get information coming up to the board meeting and, because I don't have to make a decision that day. So I just, kudos to your staff for doing a good job of that. So I appreciate you for that.
So the next two items dealing with responding to staff or community complaints. I'm sorry, Ms. Bessine, did you have something you wanted to add before I went to this?
Well, the only piece that's not here is, you know, meeting minutes. And I don't know where that would fall because that's not under agenda development.
Being under agenda items is because that's part of the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Well, your concern is?
So, so under, in our minutes, I would like to see, and I think I've shared this before, is, you know, action items so that, I think that will be helpful in agenda planning so that, you know, next steps are clearly articulated for us, as well as the community to see, okay, well, they talked about this, what did they say would be next steps? And I think that would be helpful for everyone. So I would like to see that in our agenda minutes, our meeting minutes, I'm sorry.
Like the workshop, our work session minutes, not the agenda minutes.
Our work session minutes.
Right.
Yeah.
Or minutes of the meeting generally. I mean, because action items can come out through any meeting.
Right, through any meeting, right. So all of our meetings, I would like to see those action items.
Anyone have any objections with that? I mean, I agree with that, but anyone have any? Okay. On the staff and community complaints, the versions that you have before is a little different than the versions I sent to you. And one of the reasons for that is I thought we might, as a board, spend some outside time kind of thinking about it. Because one of the things that we've talked about it before, so if a parent or a staff person has a concern, personally, I'm not sure what the difference is if you bring your concern to the podium, or if you email your concern, or if you share your concern with me in the grocery store. If we, if it gets to the point where it seems like, you know, and we have a, hopefully, we are also, as school board members, talking about the chain of command. You know, have you talked to the classroom teacher? Have you talked to the principal? So on and so forth. You know, listening to other school boards' experience here, my caution is, if we set up a dynamic where a person feels that if I come to the school board meeting and voice a concern, that somehow that elevates the district's interest in what the concern is versus any other manner which somebody may raise a concern. And then you get into equity issues because somebody who may work Wednesday nights, first and third Wednesdays, when we're in meetings and can't make the podium, do we then say that somehow they have less access to feedback and follow-up than somebody who comes to the microphone? So I just know, as this was written in the past and as I was reading it, I just feel like we need to kind of feel and hear from Dr. Boone and talk about as a team, what fits for us and how do we find that balance between equity and things that come to us? And also not turn things into the superintendent and the strategic leadership team is spending all their time trying to follow up on concerns that could have been dealt with at the building level or whatever. Dr. Boone?
This one is interesting. Sunday night, I had an opportunity, I was asked by Charlotta Williams, the outgoing president of the Education Association of Norfolk, to serve on a panel with her as we were talking about district and association relationships. So I was the superintendent there, but there was another school district there. And it was very interesting, the dynamic, because the association member had taken on the mindset and the behavior that they needed to inform the board because the board didn't know certain things, and they didn't know what they didn't know. And it was a requirement, it was a responsibility of the association member to make sure that they knew. And I sat there and I listened to that, and Charlotta and I had some sidebars and other folks that were at the table. And I said, that's interesting. I said, because I almost see that as supplanting the role of the school board. Because I did say, well, the school board member are going to get a chance to talk about where they are and, you know, and all of that. And so I think it is important to have those open lines of communication. You know, that's been one of my goals, not to quieten the mic at all, that's not the goal, but to build the relationships and see things that were coming to the microphone previously were truly operational, day-to-day things that should have been handled. And so we've opened up the lines in a way that if there's an issue- And so we've opened up the lines in a way that if there's an issue that's going on with a staff member, um, and, and finding out what the issue is, we have these open doors, we, we communicate, we have these regular meetings. Um, you know, I put it in the hands of certain team members, we talk about it, we, we respond. And a lot of that doesn't get to the table, that doesn't get to the mic. And so, um, not, not necessarily about the context, but I thought the title of Roger Chesley's current item is something about when pool pits and podiums become whatever else he said. And that's what this discussion makes me think about. You know, does a squeaky wheel get the oil? Does the loudest person or the person who has that frequency? And, you know, I think it's, it's good that, that staff members will and community will email board members, um, that you all are really great about forwarding that to me and allowing me to work through and see what's going on and try to be responsive to the, to the individuals. And I think that's part of the voice too, that we need to make sure that the community is aware of. Because, you know, when those come in that way, when we have awareness, whether at the mic or via email or phone call, then we can look into it. A district the size, we don't necessarily know everything that's going on. Smaller district, you, you kind of know every time, you know, the bus turns left or right on the street. And so, um, I think it is very important for us to, to make sure that accessibility is available, but that accessibility is not interpreted as being the way in which the solution is resolved, is, is, solution is found. And because it goes back to the earlier conversation about constituent service. If I'm constantly in this mode of talking with, it doesn't fault, um, cause the employee to have to, to build some relationships also or deal with some things. And there's also that assumption, if there are one or two or three or seven board members that are the go-tos, it'll always be, uh, could always have a potential to fracture the governance team relationship because who's on first. And that's why a lot of times for me, I tried to give as much information in detail to the board such that when we aren't together, uh, you have information that, that you too can share about things that are going on.
You know, it's interesting, in Hampton's, uh, uh, agreements and procedures, they have, um, you know, obviously, we have school board meetings and the purpose of the meeting is, you know, facilitation of the board's work. Uh, but then he also said, the intent is to assist with informed decision-making. Says if a pa- if a patron addresses the board during a meeting with requests for information, uh, the superintendent will ensure the question is referred to the appropriate staff. And as appropriate, the information is provided, uh, the information that is provided to the patron will be provided, uh, to the school board in the superintendent's briefing. So whether it's, you know, whatever the periodic timeframe is where the superintendent may send out a briefing, then that would be an opportunity, when it's appropriate, for the superintendent to alert the board. Uh, later on, they, they even address, um, you know, anonymous concerns. So those, if somebody receives anonymous concern, they are referred to the superintendent for information purposes only. No action will be required unless additional information provides for an opportunity in which a specific response can be provided to a specific individual. In cases where the complaint involves a particular school or staff member, the principal and/or appropriate staff member will be informed the concern as an FYI. So, again, while I was at this training, I just knew that was something that we kind of talk about. So my recommendation is I ask, um, you know, Dr. Smith if, if he would send these. And maybe, uh, Dr. Boone, you can come back and make some recommendations to the board, how you would like for us to consider handling the communication in that regard, and we could talk about it that way. Because as you just described, your, your process may be a little different than what we've experienced before.
Right. It's very similar to that. And, you know, when we have it, a lot of times if it's a, if it's a one, a singleton issue and a board member has, has responded, we try to get the response back to you, whether it was directly from me or one of the team members who's dealt with it. Um, you know, certainly, we take complaints and concerns seriously. Under my leadership, we don't necessarily move all anonymous concerns to the top of the hall. We do take it seriously. We do look into them. Um, but don't, don't drive in, you know, in, in terms of that work. And, um, the items of interest or certain emails that I will send to the board when there are things that, again, for full awareness of the board, whether it's related to, uh, something that happened in the district or, or something that was spoken, and I want to inform the board as to the information, I try to provide that. That's a mechanism, so that, that's part of that vehicle that you were mentioning.
So, question. So just for the sake of time, I'm going to kind of skip. If there's any one that, uh, anybody wants to, has any disagreement with or thinks needs to be, uh, modified, we can do that. But I just wanted to skip down to the data request one, because we often, uh, have to talk about how that works. Uh, so what we have before us is, uh, board members may make data requests directly to the chair. The chair will ask the superintendent to provide an estimate of how long the data requests will take. The information will be communicated to the full, full board. Should the request be fulfilled, the results will be distributed to the full board. That's a little different than how we've been doing it. Um, but it, it seems fairly straightforward. Any thoughts or questions or concerns about this recommendation as it currently exists regarding data requests?
Dr. Robinson?
My only comment would be to, um, if it's going to go directly to the chair, the chair has to be, take the responsibility to make sure it's forwarded to the superintendent for...
Yeah, and that's, that's why I said, we've, the way we've been functioning is that, um, we would also copy the, the whole board, uh, on, on the requests. But, uh, Ms. Basine?
Yeah. Well, we've also talked about, you know, a data request that I may want may not be something that the whole board feels is, um, important to, to make, depending on the, the volume or time that it may take to make that request. So we've talked about that in the past, and I'm not sure where that falls, um, falls here, unless it's something that we talk about in a meeting and it's an action step, part of, you know, an action item as a result of what we discuss in a meeting. I think that would be different versus me, you know, sending you an email saying, I want all this, I want the data and all this stuff. And it may not be something that the whole board thinks is something we should focus on. It might be, it might be, it might be one of those topics where it is a manage type, you know, where, where a board member may get into some of the managerial, operational aspects versus the governance piece. So I think, um, I think we need to be sure that the data requests that are being made are, is something that the full board, um, wants to also have access to. And, um, I had another thought about the data requests, so the two kinds, and then there's, there's the clarification data request, which may be an offshoot off of information that we've already received. And how to ask for additional information, when to ask for that additional information, I think we may need to clarify, um, when, when that request is made too. Like, for instance, a report that we receive that's posted on Board Docs for a meeting, you know, if we have additional questions, um, we've, we've said before that clarification questions are good, but sometimes we all want to hear what that question is, like in a meeting setting. Like, I personally like it in a meeting setting to see, so that we can talk about those additional data requests.
One of the goals is that, uh, one of the other norms and protocols is trying to make sure that all board members have access to the same information. So, you know, ideally, if it's a, uh, I guess what we call a data request may be a follow-up that turns into a, an agenda item. I mean, so we could have a discussion about, I don't know, alternative education and then want to ha- and then based upon what we receive, have additional questions come up. It may actually warrant that the board still has some things that the board wants to discuss or needs to have some deeper understanding. And I think in that sense, we may want to treat it more as a continuing conversation versus finding ourselves where, uh, you know, because I know when I first came on the board, you know, I was guilty of that with send stuff because I had my own, you know, depth of what I needed to, to have versus what somebody else needed to have. And I just think we have to, if we follow this, then you put, um, a certain level of accountability on the chair to try to judge that. If we don't trust that system, then we need to come up with some other way of trying to figure it out. Um, but ideally, I would think that if there are multiple questions, that suggests to me that there needs to be more discussion as a whole versus individually. Dr. Robinson?
We've tried this in previous administrations where part of the board meeting, especially the work sessions, was a, a part in the board matters is that, is there a data request? And then we'd be all sitting here and...
Discuss it then.
Discussing. Like, if I want the, the win-loss records of Maury High School versus Norview High School for the last 30 years, and, um, the rest of the board members say that, you know, that's not really worth our time, that's not a board-level question. So then that might, might be able to discuss that in, in, in the whole, and then it goes through you to, to siphon it out. So I, that would, and we've tried it before, we've never been real successful at it.
Right.
But I think if we're disciplined about it, I think we can do a better job. So at, at a specific time in the, in the meeting, you could probably do it, it shouldn't take too long in both meetings, both the formal, is there, are there any data requests? And then we can discuss them at that time.
Dr. Boone?
I hear that the, the flag that's raised for that is sometimes we can find ourselves as administration team members doing the list of lists. And so the blanket data requests, to me, data requests ought to be linked to something either we're working on or, or some issue that has come, become before us. So, you know, if someone speaks at the mic, can you provide us some data around that? I do wear when we start seeing any data requests. And I'm not picking, I'm not, not picking on the language, but, um, that, that could grow, could take legs and become, uh, a, a lot of time. And then I, I'm, I know a lot of protocols, and, and we alluded to it a little bit in this one, is that if, uh, there's a data request that, while it seems a very simple request, sometimes we just don't have that, those data readily available. And so is that something that the board collectively wants? And the other piece deals with the timelines of when it's expected. Um, because if we're in the middle of some major launch of something or something that we're really implementing or dealing with, we have to pull staff to do certain things. So, um, I'm okay, I'm, I think it's appropriate for data requests, just making sure that, um, we see what it's linked to. Yeah.
And, and I, yeah, I don't, that was, I use that example of, of very minute data that is really unimportant, that would be rejected, say that, that's not necessary. But my, my, is the timing of it, instead of going through a bunch of emails and everybody replying to the email, it's brought to the meeting and said, this is not appropriate, or you say, we don't have that kind of data readily available, or we're in the middle of, of a major rollout that we can't do it at this point in time.
Or sometimes I think we've been able to say, we're going to present that when we have such and such on the agenda. So I think, you know, pretty much earlier, we talked about board members being able to give input into agenda items or suggest agenda items. I think that's a way too, rather than the separate board piece, if there are data requests. And then sometimes we can see if they, are they linked to something that's already in the hopper for a board meeting, uh, agenda items. And if not, then, you know, where do we go from there with it? That might be a way of receiving.
So why don't we, uh, put that in our, uh, V S B A parking lot and, uh, we can talk through that. And then, um, in addition to that, I think as we've talked about with Dr. Boone, uh, this year, that we want to, uh, have more, uh, opportunities for two-on-one meetings with her. That might also be the opportunity to discuss those things and see whether or not they end up coming back to agenda planning as a, as a recommendation. But just for the, uh, sake of time for now, uh, because we do have other things we want to get to, um, anything else in terms of, uh, uh, norms or items? Uh, again, just going through Hampton's, we've talked about day-to-day operations, school board meetings, uh, general communications, um, anonymous concerns is something that they've put forward. We just talked about information requests. Um, I think media relations, we touched on that for the most part with, uh, the role of the, uh, that the board chair or whoever is designated, uh, is supposed to touch on. Anything else that, uh, Ms. Basine?
Um, well, the social media piece is, is, I believe, um, newer, obviously. And so I don't know if we need to talk about that.
Yeah, I think we do, but that was something that Ms. Banks added back. And I think, I know on the, uh, on the agenda under policy, you are going to kind of touch on that again.
Yeah.
So to me, I figure if we can touch on that after we...
Okay.
See what our updated policies are, it would be an opportunity for us to consider that.
Okay.
And then the other thing is the, uh, the school visit piece. Uh, we're still clear that we, you know, give a heads up to the administration if we're going to make a school visit, let the principal know, uh, that we're coming and that we appreciate what happens when a school board member walks in the building, and that's the, the rationale behind that, that protocol. Ms. Basine?
Yeah. Um, in addition to that, the attending school events, um, you know, I think we get notice about these events appropriately, but I think it'd be, I think it'd be good if we could also communicate with one another about who's attending, um, events and just so that, because I know there are times where there've been one or two school board members at events that, that are significant. I mean, we have, you know, like, recognition ceremonies and things like that, that, that we, I feel like we should say, you know, these are things that all, just like we talk about conferences, I think there should be events that we make a commitment that all seven of us are there, or that we have a majority there as much as possible, you know, so...
I think these, these are referring, so they're, uh, board events or division events, which obviously our goal should be to try to have, uh, everyone there to the extent that we can, when it's appropriate. I think these are more speaking of what you were saying too, in the form of like, we just received the request from Ingleside to come visit. And so, you know, it's encouraged for folks to go visit. If you want to go to the, uh, uh, all-city band, you know, that's, that's encouraged.
Right.
But if we have a ceremony event, if we're doing a joint meeting with the PTA, those types of things, uh, you know, if we're recognizing the teacher of the year.
Well, that's, that's what I mean.
You know, we need to make sure that we're communicating that, um, that we like for everybody to attend, and also make sure that we get enough notice...
Yes.
So that we can adjust our schedules as appropriate to attend.
Right.
Because we still have lives.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, and that's something else that's always talked about, that as school board members, you have to try to find that balance. And so the advantage of having seven folks is, um, oftentimes, we ought to be able to have representation at different activities. But if it's something that is a formal activity where the full board is expected to attend, the sooner we know, the earlier we know, we can communicate that and we can try to adjust our schedules, uh, accordingly. But sometimes doctor schedules and other schedules, you just, you know, you just...
Schedules.
Right. Okay, so let's, uh, yes, sir?
I know you want to move off, but just kind of move on.
No, no, please, go ahead.
Um, this, this next major division violation and, uh, new ones of protocols, were you intending to move, uh, to cover that, or are you going to just move on to the next?
Well, I was going to come back to it because the version that's here that has two violations is different from the three violation version that I said.
I was just going to make that point.
Yeah.
And I think we all agreed on the, the...
Yeah, we are, right, on the ones that we, the three version one that we had.
Exactly. We did.
Yeah.
So what we're seeing on the board norm one, we would delete...
Right.
Or we would replace with what we have in this other document that we did all agree on.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that, is that the point you wanted to make, or?
No.
Or you want to discuss the process?
I, I wanted to discuss the process. I, I was wondering, um, you know...
Go to the other document then. Can I, can I just pause here? Then let's go to the other document that is the one that we agreed to. We pulled that one.
Well, we can, we can come back to that if, you know, it's not as...
It's actually the next one.
Yeah.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Board member violation policy draft.
Okay.
Okay, so, so the one that's the number three, Roman numeral three, we're just gonna put X through that, and this is what's proper.
Yeah, we would replace it with, exactly. Yep. So sorry to interrupt you.
No, yeah, no problem. They say confession is good for the soul. Soul needs some goodness, but I violated this policy, you know, the policy at one point or the other.
I think we all have at one point or another.
So how are the other divisions handling this, Mr. Jordan? How do they, do they, I mean, do they have a formal process for handling this?
Some do, you know, it was interesting, you know, when you go to these meetings, there's some folks that don't have norms at all. So, you know, people are at different levels of distinction, I guess, if you will. We, we talked about this because we thought it was important. And you are supposed to be our sergeant-at-arm, so to speak.
At least that's when the sergeant-at-arm violates the protocol.
The chair designates another.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, we're all
Human.
grown men and women, right? So, in theory, we ought to be able to govern ourselves accordingly. But we all make mistakes, and we all have passions. So, at one point or the other, like I said, all of us have probably have violated something in here. But it was our effort to try to make sure we were all on the same page. And if we did see violation, have a way that the entire team agreed with, with trying to deal with it. Because otherwise, if, if you designate the chair to do it, then, and the chair does do it, then you run the risk of, okay, well, he, you know, he's acting like he's my daddy, right? Or she's acting like she's my mother. So, these are things that we agreed to. And we just went through talking about what our protocols are. And now, this just simply says what the process is if you have an offense. So, first offense, the board designee will meet with the individual to explain the offense and secure the commitment that it will not reoccur in the future. Second offense, designee may choose, depending upon the seriousness of the offense and the amount of time since the prior offense, to meet with the individual to explain it. And again, secure that it will not occur, issue a verbal notice of violation, issue a written notice with copy sent to all members of the team, and issue a written notice, read the notice at the next public meeting of the board, and request board action to sanction the board member in violation. And then, further offenses, you know, stage three, if you will, could be a republic, a public request for the offending member's resignation from the board, or initiation by the board of a campaign to have the offending board member recalled from office by a vote of the people. So, hopefully, we would never get to that point. I don't think we've gotten there at all. But, you know, Quinn was recommending, if you're gonna have these protocols, then you also need to have some process by which you can hold each other accountable. And
As a board this year, are we intending to follow?
Well, that's the discussion, that's what's on the table now.
Well, we discussed this, I believe, in our retreat in January, and that's how we came up with these three.
That's correct.
So now, it's just the time of us ratifying them, frankly.
Right. But if there's any concern about it, now's the time to talk about it, because this is what we're talking about governing ourselves by this year. Dr. Robinson?
No concerns whatsoever, but it's good that we're putting this in place with what's coming ahead of us in the future.
Yeah, well, you know.
I think it's good that, because there's gonna be robust discussion and probably some confrontation. So it's good to have these in place.
You know, when the professionals will tell you, it shouldn't make a difference whether it's appointed or elected, all new or experienced. But, but I hear what you're saying.
I hear the same thing, but I just don't believe it.
Any questions then about, everybody comfortable with what's there for now?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, let's do this. We have spent a lot of time on this. Really, the next agenda item was to begin to address kind of our team, governance team year in review, some of the things that, that we've been working on. I think we have time to start that, if everybody's comfortable with moving on to that one. And what we're gonna have to do anyway is to come back with our updated documents based upon any recommendations we have from Dr. Boone, or any additional tinkering we may do. And as we said earlier, we'll then adopt those at the first opportunity that we have. Is everybody good with that? So let's, let's just kind of talk about our governance team year interview. Dr. Boone, anything you wanted to start off with, or?
I, I think we've done a lot, and we have a lot in the hopper. The, the budget process was a big one, and is a big one. And within that, I think we saw driving priorities that the board and the governance team had in place, whether it was around the pay and comp study, the request to counsel for funding, the ways in which we worked to continue to align the budget with the needs of the district, and, and the current focus in the work of the district for success. The, the pay and comp study phase one was, was connected to that. And I think, again, that's something that we can truly celebrate as a governance team. It, it took a great deal for that to occur. Lots of staff time, lots of conversation, even the work that we were doing with the consultants. And I mentioned before, the V E A panel that I was on on Sunday. And that's one of the things that Charlotte Williams and I talked about, was the process of how it kept the associations informed all throughout the process of where we were, what we knew. They're giving us input and feedback. And even the day that we released the letter that was going to all staff, we sent it to the board, and we sent it to the associations at the same time. So that, again, having as many people informed around the message and what we were accomplishing. And certainly, Mr. Bilbs can talk about, you know, some singleton questions and requests. But all in all, knock on wood, we, we had a successful rollout of that. Obviously, we know, we're in the work of what phase two would begin to look like, because that's gonna inform budget. And again, having that transparency and that communication with staff as to what phase two will begin to look like. But I think that's certainly something that as a governance team, we, we really took from the idea of, let's look at it, let's see what we can find out from the consultant, receive the report and the recommendations, set some priorities, move forward. And then we saw that come to, to the beginning of implementation. I, I think that's extremely exciting, that we did it our team. We did the mini-retreat in January with our specialty programs review, phase one. We're gonna do some, some updates later this summer of where we are. But I, I, again, saw that as a very courageous conversation about what's in place, what do we continue? What are things we need to revisit? And how do we seek to strengthen and improve those things that we're gonna keep going? And like I said, we had some really courageous conversations with that, that day. We, the, the focused schools improvement process, we just spent the last two days in Leadership Institute. And I have to tell you, it brought me to tears as I closed out yesterday. Simply because we saw engagement of the full district at a very high level, at an authentic level. And what we heard in the feedback, what we saw and experienced in, in those two days, we even had a poster sharing. Each school in a cluster talked about how they got to the point of developing a stronger instructional leadership team, how they got people engaged around that process, how they selected their instructional focus, knowing their data and all the things that were going on, but how they were able to, to drill in and modify a focus. Doesn't mean other things aren't being addressed, but this will be the area that we think will give us the highest leverage for success in this particular aspect of the work. And being able to listen to schools as we were able to visit two or three schools in each cluster when we had those, those active, interactive sessions, and to be able to listen to the impact of the work. Schools that said, "We were doing some of this, and that we've been able to extend it and deepen it." Others said, "We started new practices." You know, and we'll talk some more in Richmond. But the, when I look at the stories of what's happening, you know, there were three of us that were on the planning board for the governor, Norfolk, Richmond, and Port, and Petersburg.
Oh, right, right.
And when I look at the stories of where we find ourselves, they're very different stories. And so, because of that, I think we're seeing, again, not the isolated pockets of attempting to address improvement, but the district-wide focus on improvement and what that looks like. And hearing principals say, "Yes, my school has been fully accredited." But it is so hard to keep a school fully accredited, because there are times when you see dips in, in your performance, and you say, "Hey, we just barely made it." And yet, when we know, where are the places that you even take it to the next level, beyond the minimal level of school accreditation? Those are the conversations that we were hearing, we were sharing, and I think focusing the district on the work. And in, in those sessions, we had central offices part of it, you know, just as the district leadership team is not just teaching and learning, academic affairs, but it's the operational aspect. And we were seated, no one, no school member sat together, no department member sat together. And as a result of that, that relationship building and all that work that's going on, and so, it's, 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 it's refreshing for me, because as the school board has supported the work and the direction that we are trying to go in terms of improving the district, turning around longstanding, underperforming schools, and creating a path for sustainability of positive results, this is a celebration point, I think, for the governance team.
And I'm just, and I'm gonna open it up, because, you know, one of the reasons I just thought it's important for us to, at this time of year, to review what we've done, sometimes I think we forget. And so, you know, if the, if the school board, if the governance team forgets the great work that's being done, and can't communicate it, even as we don't shy away from the challenges that we have, it's very easy for the negatives to just become what everybody gives attention to, and especially if the media, for whatever reason, may decide to highlight those things. And so, I don't know about you all, but I feel exhausted from the, from the past year, because I know how hard we've, we've worked. And, and I just thought it was an opportunity for us to kind of do a reflection on what we have been doing, even as we know we still have so much more that we're going to hopefully even accelerate in the coming year. Ms. Basine?
Yeah. Well, I, I second that. Having completed two years on the board, I feel like the first year, the second year was a hundred times harder than the first. So, you know, having a new superintendent, and really getting into the work this year, I think, we've had, we've had a lot of good things happening. And I was actually just thinking, thinking about that. Sometimes we dwell on the challenges and forget what we're grateful for and what we have done and accomplished. And in addition to all the things that, Dr. Boone, that you've mentioned, I think, especially the, the national climate that we're in, one of the things that, you know, there's a lot of discussion about discrimination policies. And it's like, well, we already have that, you know, it's, it's, we're ahead of the game there in terms of making sure all means all. And so, that's, that's a huge plus, I think, for us. We've passed a robust wellness policy, despite, you know, at the federal level, wanting to pull back the guidelines. We've said, "No, we're not doing that." You know, really putting the health needs of our children first. And I think that's another huge plus thing that, that we've done. And so, I just, I put that there. And I think, you know, our, our continued relationship building, I think, has been, has been good, really feeling like strides are being made there. So, so let's look forward to the work. I can imagine the year ahead is gonna be all that more, but onward.
Ahead, you mean, we, I mean, we're off and running.
The year, I know. We're, we're, that's what people always say, "Don't you take a break over the summertime? You guys aren't break?" I'm like, "Nope, we actually dive right in and keep on moving." So, anyway.
Dr. Gabor?
I would say that a lot of the work that is done at the school board level goes unnoticed. Much of the work does. And we do tend to focus on what's the next, what's the next item that we want to tackle for the benefit of the division. But some of the things that I have definitely seen a huge difference on speaks directly to what Dr. Boone said that she recognized as a concern of the division when she did her listening tour. And that was, there were several separate entities, and she wanted to figure out a way to connect them all. And you use the example of the duck foot. And clearly, regarding facilities, and I'm just gonna use that example, Dr. Robinson and I, we, it is night and day connecting how facilities is now talking with academic planning, and how they are talking with the schools to incorporate with our educational planning team. Did I get that right?
Educational planning team.
Okay. And how we connect investment in our buildings with the needs of the children that are there, and the academic programming that is going to be taking place in those buildings. So obviously, that's not gonna be something that happens overnight. That takes very purposeful planning, lots of data collection. But all of that has to be put together so that you don't have a quick fix, so you have systems thinking, sustained planning. And that is going to get us to the point where we are going to have that sustained success. We're still gonna get little, little wins here and there. But to maintain that success, that is the type of thinking that has had to be revitalized. I feel that you have revitalized in the division. And I think that's the basic foundational items that we as a board prioritize, and that's what we wanted to do. And that is a huge accomplishment. The fact that we're moving the conversation forward with C T E, we've moved the conversation forward with wellness, we're moving the conversation forward with looking at schools not just with, are they accredited or are they not accredited, but what else are they doing in order to benefit the whole child? I think that is just excellent work. And that's what we should be doing as a board who has a constituency of not just the adults, but the children. And so, again, a lot of it not recognized, a lot of it not publicized, but it's important work that's going to sustain this division and keep us in the right direction moving forward in the years to come.
I mean, I'll just, I think that, you know, being in a military town, and having the military relationship with, with the North Public Schools' military relationship shored up, strengthened, and appears to be soaring, is, is a big deal. We talked about that during the superintendent search. And so, it's good to see that, you know, eighteen, nineteen months later, that things that we said we wanted to value, that we can actually put our finger on it and see it moving. There are some critical hires that we knew need to be made, and those hires have been made. And we can see the results of, of that work and the support that's coming from, from those particular areas. You know, obviously, graduations is always the, for me, my favorite time, because you get to see the children, and you hear about the scholarships and the future careers that folks are considering, whether they're going into work or going into college. And I think it was last week, I had a young lady knock on the door to check for whether or not I had standing water in the backyard dealing with mosquitoes. And she looked at me, and she said, "I recognize you." And I said, "I recognize you too." And she was one of the you. And I said, I recognize you too. And she was one of the, she was either the, one of the valedictorians, salutatorians, or the senior class leaders who was part of the, the graduation. She was part of the Norfolk Emerging Leaders Program. And, and we just stopped, and she started talking about what she was doing this summer and her plans for the future. So, seeing the children out in the community and hearing from them, and, you know, even as the adults may focus on one thing, you know, you get emails from children, you get emails from parents, and they talk about, this was a great experience for my child, and I'm glad that my child is matriculating in Norfolk Public Schools. I mean, those messages don't get shared all the time, but those are the ones for me that obviously make a, make, make a big difference. So, you know, I just put that out there, and I just think it's an opportunity for us to pause and appreciate what we have done, even as we're gonna spend the next three months talking about what we still need to do. Anyone else want to add anything on, on that, before we?
Well, if I can add, I was just saying to Reverend Haywood, I said, I had a similar experience. I went into a restaurant, and the valedictorian of Bogartee said, do you know Melinda Boone? I said, yeah, I do, it's me. And so, she said, I thought that was you. And she told me who she was, and says, right, so we're in the restaurant taking selfies and everything else. But she also felt comfortable enough to ask some college advice as I prepared to go, because she's going to William &amp; Mary, and I had whispered something to her on the stage that day. She said, can you help me think about this? And so, she came back to the table a couple of times, and we talked, and then we talked before I left. I gave her my card, I said, if you run into any challenges, and you need that thought partner over there, just call me.
That's great.
And so, but, but you're right, that's when you know we've, we've done some things right, a lot of things right.
Reverend?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I have the sense that our relationship with the state is healing and is on a good foot, and I think that's very important for us as a division. And I too think that some of the principal hires that we've made have been very good choices and seem to be bearing some fruit. And I think that that is also a real step in the right direction for us as a division.
So, lastly, just in terms of meeting evaluation, we've kind of talked about some of that throughout the year. One of the things that we know we need to put on the forefront, you know, how do we, not only in our business meetings, but throughout the year, look for ways to do more recognitions of student achievement, and then also of our staff. So, you know, the board has asked Dr. Boone to look at, you know, we used to have, I can't remember what it was, at least twice a year, formal, big students, student recognition program, so I know that's being worked on. But one of the things I'd like for the board to consider, and we can talk about over the summer, is almost like Dr. Robinson was saying earlier about the data requests, when we look at our, when we look at our business meetings in particular, you know, is there some way, I know we oftentimes will have the, the red carpet and that type, but almost integrate it into the meeting, if there's from time to time, let's say that there's a student who's done some, some effort in robotics, and, or like the students we had, they came and talked to us about the tobacco free. Is there some way to get more student presentations or recognitions into our business meetings in a way that we can recognize the great work that our students and staff are doing, while at the same time not having a, you know, fifteen minutes just standing on the red carpet? Not that's bad, because I think it's good. But I think ultimately, you know, it's good to recognize people for the promotions that they have, because that's part of being successful. But at the same time, being able to highlight even more so some of our student work or classroom work, you know, would be, would be nice to do. So, we can just give some thought as to what we might like to see there, and as our new student rep comes on board, that might be one of the assignments that we can ask him to work on as well.
And I'm quite sure he'll be ready to share with the board, he's at Princeton now, in the summer leadership program. He left the, a couple of days after school closed and won't be back until the middle of August, so.
So, we know we have, we're gonna go to academic affairs in a moment. Y'all wanna take a ten, fifteen-minute break, and let's just reconvene at four o'clock?
Sure.
And, and then we can just start academic affairs at four o'clock with the discussion of the tribunal process. Yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'm glad you reminded me of that. We'll, we'll touch on those before we, before we finish. Thank you for that.
Mr. Jordan, is this the, are we expected to, are at six or seven, or is this?
Well, we were scheduled at six thirty, but we said we would push on right now. I think we are right on time, maybe even be a little bit ahead of time, but I don't see us getting out beyond that. We'll see what happens with closed session, I don't know about that part.
And you want to talk about these committees later on?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Let's take a break.
Okay.
Alright, so let's take a break and reconvene at four o'clock.
Okay.